Um, we do have a quorum. Is there any public comment?
No one got in touch with me to get on to the meeting and I did not get any emails.
Okay. Nothing. Okay, very good. Everybody have a chance to look at our minutes from June?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, second all in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Wow. And you'll also, bills? Bless you. We made that motion. Any, uh, is there any questions on the bills? Entertainer motion to approve the bills has submitted? Thank you, John. Thank you, Rose. Favor?
Aye.
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 Most, the bills are approved. Communications.
Okay, uh, first of all, I do want to apologize for getting you everything late yesterday. Uh, IT was having problems with our computer setup. They upgraded something and it didn't upgrade, so. Most of the correspondence was, again, uh, letters of support for various projects and programs. If there's anything anybody saw there that they need to get back or that we need to get back with, um, one of them, uh, item I, I'll just bring this one up. We got a request for our multimodal transportation grant in Covington Township. And in doing some research on it, Covington wasn't aware of it at the time. Um, and it would have required an upgrade to a township road. So I just, uh, informed Mr. Colorasi about that. They changed the scope of the project and we did recommend approval of it after they changed the scope.
Anybody have any questions on the projects? Lot of interesting projects, Steve.
Yeah, there are.
Could I make one suggestion if it's possible, guys? Uh, could you put the, that the, uh, communities are requesting? In your review?
I don't even think they tell us sometimes.
Do they?
No.
No, they just say they're applying for an LSA and can we get a support letter?
That's it.
Yeah.
Sometimes they don't even name the project.
Yeah, yeah, they don't bother to tell us what they're doing.
Dixon City, very ambitious, lot of projects.
Yeah, yeah, a lot going on there.
Any, uh, questions, comments? Old business, transportation.
Need motion on the communications?
Uh, motion approved communications?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Steven, transportation?
Transportation, um, believe it or not, we have to up, do our next round of contracts with PennDOT and federal highways, so we're started that process with UPWP. Planning partners, all of the meetings, the quarterly meetings have been virtual and the planning partners conference that's normally held in person in September or October is going to be virtual. It's going to be held over four days. A couple of mornings, a couple of afternoons. So we're, we're hoping that that was going to be an in-person, uh, conference, but they are doing it virtually. Uh, other than that, one of the projects that we took on over the summer actually happened after our June meeting, so we didn't really get a chance to discuss it. But PennDOT doesn't have a solid database of trails or trail crossings. So they determined that District Four was a good model with what we have with the Heritage Valley Trails and the DNL Trail in Luzerne County and some of the outlying counties in the district. So we became the guinea pig, I mean, the model for, um, a trail study to create a database. Uh, it entailed going out in the field, looking at where the trails cross roadways. And there was a series of about, uh, seventy-five questions that had to be addressed. So we did that, uh, took a couple of meetings to go through the process of what needed to be looked at on the county level and how we were going to do it. They wanted to see if it could be done by wifi using computers out in the field, which they found out in the areas such as Thornhurst, that doesn't work because they have no wifi. They also looked at doing it on a computer and then downloading it from your desktop. Uh, and they think that's the route they're probably going to take in doing it because they realized a lot of these trails are in real rural areas and may not have internet connection. And wha- what they found out was in downloading some of the information and data, there were some problems, so. Uh, we worked through all of that. We also were involved with a number of meetings, uh, for a number of different projects and including the Scranton, uh, Bridge Group. Those are the four bridges in downtown that John's, uh, in Scranton, in North Scranton that John is very familiar with. We have moved forward with our freight study. Uh, we were approved by PennDOT for supplemental funding. Will be for the five MPOs. Um, we hopefully, uh, will have an RFQ, RFP out on the street in the next couple of weeks. We've been working with, uh, Lehigh Valley who's taking the lead on this to get the freight study done. And if anybody has driven Interstate eighty-one or Interstate eighty in the last few months, you've probably noticed that trucks are outnumbering cars on the highways, so. We are getting a lot more warehousing, we're getting a lot more distribution centers. So this is a very timely study. Um, PennDOT's been pushing us to do it for a number of years and we finally got this coalition together to do it. So it's going to cost Lackawanna County in the neighborhood of about eight thousand dollars, which we will take out of our Unified Planning Work Program budget over two years, so it's not really going to affect the budget all that much. Also, we have started our Highway Performance Monitoring System updates. Again, we have about a hundred and fourteen sections to do. Our deadline is November and Tina will be taking the lead on that, going out in the field. Other than that, uh, we did sit in on the presentation by District Four to the Interstate Committee for funding and this was a very interesting presentation. Each district is required to list projects that they need, uh, priority projects, secondary projects on the interstates, even though they don't fund them, they're funded out of the central office. Uh, in Lackawanna County's situation, District Four, I should say, uh, one of the things that maybe you're not familiar with or you don't know, District Four has the largest number of lane miles of interstate in the Commonwealth. Between interstates eighty, eighty-one, three eighty, eighty-four, um, we have the largest number. And deck area on bridges where I believe second or third, uh, I don't recall right now. But the ask that they're looking for, for the interstate program is in the billions and the available funding, as we all know, is going down. With the use of electric vehicles, there's not as much money coming in with gas taxes. Uh, the pandemic last year, PennDOT lost about nine billion dollars in tax revenue. So everybody is scrambling, that's one of the reasons, uh, and we've sat in on a few of the meetings with the, um, Transportation Advisory Committee with the state coming up with alternative ways to fund projects. One of the big things that they're seriously looking at is, um, P-three program for bridges. And we've seen that in the paper with Luzerne County. There are actually two bridges that would impact Luzerne County directly on either end of Interstate eighty at the county lines. Uh, so Luzerne County is very up in arms with that. Uh, we would have an effect with a bridge up in Susquehanna County on Interstate eighty-one. Uh, so, right now, it looks like, a- and again, the legislature, uh, House and the Senate did approve the P-three programs until they found out it was going to affect their constituents. And now they're all up in arms and they're against it, so I don't know what's going to happen with that. But one of the other ideas that is being considered highly is, uh, fee, a gas fee on mileage. So when you would take your car in for inspection every year or two, whatever it is, there would be a tax associated with that inspection rather than taking the money from the gas tax. The logistics on how that would actually work, um, would still have to be looked at because of the fact that, um, not everybody gets their cars inspected at the same time, it's a two-year deal, so. Do they bill you all at once? Do they bill you quarterly? How that would work? But that's one of the things that's, uh, out there right now. That's basically it on the transportation. I, there are a lot of other items that I listed in there that, uh, I'm not going to discuss, but if you have questions, I could address them.
Any questions from anybody? Let's move on. Sapa?
Saga continues. Since we met last in June, we did get Waverly on board. They, uh, passed their ordinance on June fourteenth. Um, we've got Dunmore and Scranton, um, still waiting on. Dunmore was going to adapt on the thirteenth, but Carol just called me this morning, said they don't have a quorum, so it's going to be the twenty-seventh of September?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and I'm hoping all the issues have been resolved. It sounded like they were. So after Dunmore taps Grant, John, do you have any idea what's going on in Scranton?
No, not a clue. I really don't know. Uh, we, I, I know the planning commission met when I was on vacation, uh, at the end of July. I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting. Uh, I don't know where Donnie's at, would it, to tell you the truth, so I just gotta, haven't been involved in a while.
Right. So Scranton will be the last and everybody's just kind of waiting patiently. I'm going to put quotes around that for, for the, the last adoption, so these ordinances will go into effect because some of them, like Clark's Green, or Clark Summit had pastors in December of last year and they're still in limbo. There was some concern about which ordinance are they supposed to be following, but the way the language was written, nothing goes into effect until the last municipality adopts. So everybody is still going by their old ordinances. Um, some are just getting a little, uh, impatient, I should say, but, you know, it is what it is. The grants, the grant is complete. Uh, we did have drafts in place, so there was no issue with, uh, you know, getting the reimbursement from DCED and I actually put the closeout request in on that, so we should be hearing back from them shortly.
They didn't have a public hearing on it yet, Liz?
Scranton, no. No, Dunmore, and Dunmore had two, but they're having a third one now because they've, they've gone past the, there's like ninety days, I think, between the hearing and the, yeah.
Okay, alright. Any questions on Sapa? Let's move on to rail.
Okay, uh, not much has happened, but a lot has happened on rail. The, the committee has not met in a number of months. Uh, we were trying to get a, a meeting together and then Larry Molsky asked us to hold off because there was a major announcement coming, which hadn't been announced. So, the first thing was, we did meet with the, or we did submit information to the Congressman's Office, um, for, I want to call it spike money that, uh, Congress is looking at, uh, as part of the infrastructure bill. So that was on the agenda. Uh, we did submit information with that along with the rail authority. And then, um, as everyone has seen in the paper, the rail authority signed an agreement with Amtrak to do a study on the rail. Uh, this is a, a great, uh, advance on the project because we've been dealing with New Jersey Transit all the while for light rail. Uh, with Amtrak, it would be heavy rail. Um, there's really not much difference in the services. There'd probably be a little bit, uh, more, uh, on schedule with New Jersey Transit than with Amtrak. Amtrak would probably only be two trains a day. With New Jersey Transit, we were looking at possibly up to six. But that, that's, it doesn't preclude running both services, uh, just at different times. So, we'll be working with the rail authority on getting the information for that, uh, study to get it underway. But as I said, it, it's a big feather in the cap to be on Amtrak's radar now. They are really looking at the project. And in the discussions with Amtrak and with, uh, Larry at the rail authority, this project across the country is the only project that all of the right of way is in public ownership. It's the only project in the country that has their environmental clearances done, even though they would have to be updated. It's the only project in the country that has all of the studies already done. So basically, the study that they'll be doing with Amtrak will be updating the numbers. And since the last study that was done, the big difference is now you can include commuters, you can include recreational travel, which, as Harry knows, that was always a big bugaboo. When we would do the studies, they only want at-work commutes. And one of the big things that we have is, New York City has six million people that don't drive and there would be a direct rail line into the Poconos for tourism. So, that will increase ridership immensely.
Sounds very hopeful.
It does.
Is Amtrak looking at continuing service into New York City?
As of right now, the study is only to Scranton, but, uh, there has been, uh, a, a loose group of senators from New York, senators and representatives from New York that are looking at extending the service from Scranton to Buffalo, the original Lackawanna line. Right now, there is no direct route from Albany into New York City. There's no direct route from Buffalo into New York City. That was the old Lackawanna Main Line, so they're looking at increasing the service or getting new service from their major cities there into New York City. So, we have the New Jersey delegation, we have the Pennsylvania delegation and now picking up the New York delegation, so it, it's really optimistic, really hopeful.
Anybody have any questions? Hazard mitigation, Liz?
Yep, um, so we have thirty-seven municipalities that have adopted the plan. Actually, it's thirty-eight because I did get Scott Townships, uh, yesterday, so it's up to thirty-eight. Thirty-six have been accepted by FEMA and the one that they will not accept is from Old Ford. Uh, Old Ford's agreed to participate like all the rest of the municipalities. Um, and they actually, uh, did adopt the resolution accepting the plan. They did send somebody to the meeting, but they never completed their questionnaires. So if FEMA had told us at the beginning, everything was mandatory and if you didn't do it, they weren't going to accept it. They, they, they were good on their word. So we had to have a meeting with, um, Mary Lynn and, um, the borough engineer, who was, um, oh, Steve, who was it? David Packen. Yeah. Explaining what, you know, what, what they have to do. Um, they need to complete the questionnaires. Uh, the plan actually has to be amended now, so we have to go back to the consultant, have it amended to include all their information and then resubmit it to FEMA for approval of the amendment. So the cost of this is on the borough. So if they had done their homework like everybody else had done, it would have been a no, a not, you know, not an issue. So, um, and then the two that I don't, I, I'm hoping Harry can be, get me some, uh, can't get anything out of music.
I read this, I read this last night, Liz. I read this last night and put a call into music this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, to Jane, so I'm waiting for a callback.
Alright, just waiting on those two so far and, and then it'll all be done.
You got it.
Are the questionnaires that cumbersome?
No. No.
Strange.
Okay, good.
Actually, when we had the workshop with FEMA and PMA at the beginning of this process, they could have filled out the questionnaires at that workshop.
Yep.
And the representatives from PMA would have assisted them.
Yep.
Oh, my.
Can't make it any easier.
Yeah, really.
Okay, anybody have any questions on hazard mitigation? Move on, Jessupig.
Um, just the final draft is complete. We have the last stakeholders meeting on the second of September. Everything looks good. It's going to DEP by the end of the month for their review, hopefully approval.
Any questions? Our comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan has been approved by the commissioners. Uh, it is now on the county website. Uh, the story map is also on the website, uh, so if you're interested in taking a look at it. Uh, we did not have hard copies printed for every municipality since it is on, I think, three different websites right now. If anybody needs it, they can download it from there. But as part of our contract, we had ten hard copies done for our office and for the commissioners and just if anybody wanted to take a look at it. Uh, we also had ten CDs and ten thumb drives burned. So again, if a municipality doesn't want to download it and they want something else, we can give them one of those. Uh, Luzerne County did print out copies for all of their municipalities, all of the school districts, all of their other agencies.
That's a lot of trees.
Not sure why. But it was a rather large expense. But as I said, uh, we got our final invoice from Luzerne County. Luzerne County had taken the lead on it. We got our final invoice last week. I processed it yesterday. Um, so that project is now completed. Uh, and if anybody, I believe we have enough hard copies, if anybody's interested, I can get you one. Otherwise, it's, as I said, online.
That's a great job, guys. Any questions on the company? Let's move on to our internships. Wow, wrapping them up for the summer.
Yeah, they're done. Um, our Cornell intern is back at Cornell. Um, our Bloom intern, uh, Bob Kenny, who's lives in Hanover Township, has agreed to stay as a part-time employee because he only has classes, um, two days a week.
Nice.
So, um, we, uh, Brenda did meet with the salary board last week and we did get, um, the transportation planner and the senior, or I'm sorry, the assistant planner positions combined into a new, a new planning position. I guess they're calling it senior planner, um, with the starting salary forty-five thousand dollars to, we, we need to attract qualified people to, into these positions. So they decided to, um, combine those two, make it into a, um, a different position and pay the, pay them a little bit more. Um, we also did get approved two part-time clerk positions, which we, we will use for interns, um, now and in the future. So that's what Bob is going to be, um, classified as right now until he graduates in May and with the hope of moving into that senior planner position. Um, this, this kid is, is awesome. Okay, he's ex-army. He's very meticulous, he's very detailed. You only have to tell him once how to do something and he does it. And he's very polite and I, and I, you know, attribute that to the military. Um, and he will be going out with Tina when they do the HPMS, um, to help her with that.
Are we going to train him and he's going to leave for Luzerne County?
Yeah. That's why I'm trying to get him to stay here, so.
Yeah.
I'll pull him in.
Well, we've got an advantage because he does live in Luzerne County, so maybe he'll stay here.
Yep.
He actually wanted to go to Florida after he graduated because I guess his girlfriend is from Jamaica or whatever and she didn't like the winters and she wanted to go back to Florida, but I guess the sticker shock on the cost of living down there, um, he's changing his mind.
So, you got a salary, you, Brenda, you got the salary up to forty-five thousand?
Yeah, Brenda's not on, that's Joe, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's great. I started the commission at eighty-nine hundred dollars. I'm glad to see we're moving up the salaries.
Yeah, but they're still not where they should be.
No, you're right. You're right.
You're right, you're right. Okay, good. Uh, any questions? I hope he stays, I hope he stays.
Yeah, me too.
Very good. Um, any other questions on anything on our old business? On the business, Steven?
Okay, uh, as I mentioned when we started, we're not going to go through all thirty-five reviews. Uh, most of them were simple, one and two, spot subdivisions, couple of minor land developments. But there is on page eighteen and nineteen, uh, North Point Industrial Warehouse in Covington. And that was Mayor.
Yep, actually it was one of our interns, but, um, it looks like I did a lot of work this summer, but actually it was the interns that did most of these.
Good girl.
Yeah. Um, nothing really, uh, no real problems with this, just some housekeeping items. I just wanted to point out that the, um, the trend on the, the, uh, million square foot warehouses is still continuing. Um, this one's just a little under a million, it's, uh, eight hundred thousand, uh, right at the intersection of three oh seven and, um, so I just wanted to point that out, that that, that's the trend and it's still continuing.
Okay, uh, next one is also Mary Liz, page seventy-three, Griffin Land Development in Benton.
Actually, a small land development plan. Um, there's an existing seventy-six hundred square foot, um, manufacturing facility on Route four thirty-eight and they're putting a new building up, sixty-four hundred, uh, square foot. Just a little bit of confusion on it. They were calling it an accessory structure, but if it's really an accessory structure, they wouldn't need a land development plan. And it was going to be used for office space and for the manufacturing, so it's actually not accessory. Light manufacturing in that zone, which is a commercial zone, uh, is a special exception. So they're going to need a approval from the zoning hearing board to, um, put that second building on there. Again, no stormwater management plan, uh, no indication on the water supply. I don't believe it's probably an onlot well. Again, the boundary survey, um, did not have the surveyor seal and, um, you're just questioning the existing, uh, onlot storage system because, um, if they're increasing any, um, flows, they're going to need a, an upgrade to that and just questioning whether the SEO has looked at it.
Mary Liz, would you explain to me the definition of an accessory structure? I'm a little confused.
It, it's a structure that's subordinate to the principal structure. So when you look, when you think of accessory structures, you think of sheds, garages.
Okay.
Things like that. Um, even a, a commercial accessory structure, maybe a storage building, you know, something similar to what a shed would be in a residential area, but they were actually going to be doing manufacturing and have office space in this building. So it really wasn't accessory. I think because there, it was a second building and it was smaller than the first one, that's what they thought they were going to try and call it, but, no.
Yeah, because it says the original building is office manufacturing, this is going to be office manufacturing, so it's a, it's a sister to the brother, a brother to the sister, so you.
What it is, is an expansion and it's an expansion of a use that, that's a special exception, so they need that special exception.
Gotcha. Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and finally, on page seventy-five, seventy-six, uh, Pine Grove in Waverly. Waverly is one of the few municipalities that we have, maybe it's the only one that has conservation development.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you're not familiar with that, what conservation development is, rather than having each home or each building on, for instance, a one-acre lot, you can, uh, they have four different levels of how you can do the development in the township. Uh, you can choose which one and then you cluster the units and there are certain densities per unit, uh, per building, I should say. Uh, the original plan that came in from Waverly, uh, from the developers, came in in November of last year. And when they gave us the plan, they had more duplex units than they were allowed with the density factors in the, uh, conservation district that they had chosen, but they didn't choose any. So that made it even more complicated. So they've revised the plan, they've come back with it. They now have the proper number of units within the overall development. They have clustered them. Uh, there is going to be a large, uh, area of, for stormwater management and they're contin- they're continuing to maintain wetlands and they will have, uh, open recreation areas for people, trails and things like that, so. Uh, it's a far better design, it does meet all the regulations. There, I only had two comments on it and this is a comment, and I'll put my fire chief's hat on for a minute. I hate cul-de-sacs. Um, and we've had instances where you have a cul-de-sac and something happens on the one end and people can't get out the other end. And in this case, they have a cul-de-sac off of a cul-de-sac. So they're compounding the situation and the township, when they reviewed it, said, no, the one cul-de-sac is not extension, uh, or it doesn't exceed the length because it's stopped at the other cul-de-sac, which doesn't make sense because you still can't get out. So that was my one comment. And the other comment, and I'm not sure about this, with the interior two cul-de-sacs, they're putting in sidewalks. But the connecting road out to the main highway, they're not putting in sidewalks. And the reason being is, on, um, SR six thirty-two, which this connects to, there are no sidewalks there. So they're not going to put sidewalks in from six thirty-two to the beginning of the first intersection of the two cul-de-sacs. Now, we agree with the interse- or with the sidewalks internally because we do push for sidewalks. But the reasoning for not doing it from six thirty-two doesn't make sense because, for instance, school buses are not going to go into the development. They're going to probably drop the kids off on six thirty-two. So now the kids are going to have to walk on the road for about five, six hundred feet until they get to a sidewalk. So, there are some trade-offs that they can do in the development, the township could give them some, some waiver. Some waivers or whatever to put those sidewalks in, but we think those sidewalks should go in. Yeah, no matter what.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Again, uh, if there's any of the other reviews you want us to go over, um. We could do that, but. Most of them are two and three lot. Or just a lot combinations.
Questions? Hearing none, I don't entertain a motion to approve our development reviews for, uh, June, July, August.
Okay.
I'm moved to approve.
Thanks, Rose, second.
Okay.
Second.
Second, thanks, Jeff, thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
I miss who made the motion?
Rosemary made the motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Harry, just for the record, there is one Lobella job in there, buried in there in Mayfield, so just let me know, I recuse myself of, on that one particularly. For the minute, Steve.
Yeah, I've got it added for notes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Good. Um, let's move on to any other business. Mary Liz, one item, I just got a phone call from the Borough, they approved the Hazard Mitigation Plan. May.
And never sent it.
And they'll send you the resolution.
Okay.
Jane.
Yeah, that, that's the case in a lot of these, uh, that, that I'm waiting on, that they, even though how many times you send them the reminder, send me the copy, they don't. Yeah, because I have to send that to FEMA, then FEMA in turn. Except, either accepts it or in Old Ford's case doesn't, you know, and then we have to let the municipality know that they've been.
Very good, you got it, they're sending that to you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, no other business, is there any public comment, we have no public.
Uh, there's no public comment, I just wanted to mention for other business. Uh, I will be attending the, uh, part, the Recreation and Trails Open Space Conference in Erie, uh, we're making a presentation on our bike study. The consultants and Chris Chapman and I are going to be doing that. And, uh, then. It's going to be. September nineteenth to the twenty-first. Um. And then in October. October seventeenth to the eighth to the nineteenth, uh, Mi- Mary Liz, Tina and I will be attending the P P A conference along with Cindy. Um, we're going to drive out together. And I will be making a presentation with the consultants and Chris Chapman again on the Comprehensive Plan and the Long Range Plan. So, uh. We actually are doing two sessions for two different conferences.
Great. Hopefully, that one will be an in-person one and we'll stay that way.
Uh, yeah, uh, everything we've heard so far with P P A, they're gonna do it in person no matter what.
Yeah.
Good. And Steve, did you say you had another COVID case last week?
Uh, yes. One of the people in our office, um, Mark McCanti, his. Wife tested positive. Uh, they, they both had all the vaccinations, but she tested positive with a breakthrough. So he had to get tested. Um, and in the meantime, we were all put under quarantine, everybody except Brenda, because she was the only one that had been out of the office that Friday. So the entire office was quarantined, we had to get tested. Um. Mark came back negative, everybody else came back negative, so we were good.
So you're all back in the office?
Yes, everybody's back.
Do I get banned at the office?
Yeah.
Uh, some people.
Trade-offs, it had, some, some days at home are, are, are okay, but not, not every day, it's just, it's complicated here with ordinances and plans and you, you can't. Can't do everything at home.
Yeah.
Right.
True, true, okay.
No, stay safe.
Yep, any other business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks, John.
Saga.
Thanks, Rose. All in favor?
Hi.
What, no opposition, very good. Hey.
Take care.
Coming today, appreciate it very much.
Hey, Harry.
Everyone.
Harry, thirty-five minutes.
What was that?